Here, live your worship.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rousseau. All right, council, I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for June ninth, 2022 to order with adoption of the agenda. Someone make that motion, Council Ryan, seconded by Council Charlotte. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting for May twelfth. Someone make that motion for me, Council Charlotte, seconded by Council Elliott. All in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Saying none. I'm just going to move on to announcements from the mayor. This past weekend was a busy weekend for the city of Revelstoke. The Revelstoke Show and Shine Car Show, great success, lots of people in the community, as well as three school reunions, fifty years, fifty-two years, and fifty-five years. And I will have to admit that a lot of my family was here for that. So tells you all the way. Anyway, it was a great, great weekend. So very grateful to all those committee members who put everything together. And wonderful weather stayed well for people. So appreciate of that. All right, we're going to move on to staff reports, economic development, resort development strategy. So Ms. Brown.
Thank you for, Jolene, for sharing that. It's on the screen, or can we have the the actual strategy on the screen? Great. And I guess we can click through to page three. And I'll just let you know as we go forward. So it's been a very, very packed six weeks of trying to pull this draft strategy together. We've had a lot of input from city staff, starting actually with Lori Donato and Steve Black, as well as input from the planning department and finance, to make sure that we were approaching this with the goal of identifying those city capital assets that could be enhanced, or updated, or improved with the use of RMI funding. That is the goal of the program. It is a tourism-related program, but it is for municipalities to actually invest in their infrastructure and their amenities. So we tried to change the way that we thought about it and approached it to make sure that senior staff had identified their prime or priority capital projects, they were in their work plans, they had budgets in place to leverage or to match, and that we then went to the tourism partners to say, here's a list of city infrastructure projects we'd like to embark on, which one of these make the most sense to this group that helped to draw visitation to the community and help to ensure that visitors have a really good experience, a high-value experience. So different kind of approach. I'm just going to touch on some of the content of the pages in front of you. Staff did a great job putting together an overview of how tourism has been impacted by COVID. Nevertheless, we're still showing that tourism is a top industry for us. We're the number one MRDT community as measured by the MRDT tax income in the Kootenay Rockies region of thirteen, and the number ten in B.C. overall of sixty-eight communities. I would also point out that our tourism staff won an award this year for the best destination in B.C. because of their marketing expertise. So lots of eyes on Revelstoke. And it was, it was a delight to be participating in the resort community collaboration meeting, Selden Roseland, a week and a half ago, with the CIOs of the other resort towns of Whistler, Tofino, Invermere, Fernie, all of the groups like that, had sent at least one or two staff, and it was a great opportunity to meet with the ministry, talk about the impact of tourism on our respective resort communities, and how we were able to use this programming to leverage capital funds and investment in tourism attractions. You can go to the next page, Jolene. And actually, the next one after that, page five, just to highlight, we've pulled a lot of this information from the tourism documents, looking at our key visitors. We've got active families, mature traveler, and millennials. So those are the kinds of things they're passionate about. This is what they're looking for, for visitor experience. We know that millennials are often here to work as well as to visit, and there are mature travelers who also come back to retire here. So this is much more than just a tourism exercise. This is actually a resident attraction opportunity as well to highlight the best that Revelstoke has to offer. Next page. So you can see by room revenues, the impact of the pandemic significantly dropped our income in 2020, and 2021 has started going back up, and we expect 2022 to be a bumper year. It certainly was at the ski resort. So based on what we're hearing from the accommodators, it's across the board, really, really strong revenue figures for this year. So hopefully, we'll meet the high set in 2019, or maybe even surpass it. The RMI funding is based on this revenue. So as a whole, it doesn't come from the revenue, but the top-ups that we get every year from the Ministry of Tourism are based on our performance with regards to other communities. So the fact that we are in the top ten means that we would get a larger proportion of that additional tourism revenue compared to, say, other resort communities. So our performance and our room stays funnel back more funds to the community to top off our, our funding. I would also point out that this includes the online accommodation platform funds. And as you know, those are the funds collected from Airbnb operators and other VRBO operators, and all those funds are streamed directly into a fund for affordable housing. So that is growing in line with the room revenues overall. You can skip ahead to page eight, a couple pages more. Just touching on what tourism has identified as our natural strengths and weaknesses as a tourism destination. Of course, our environment, our natural products, a sense of community that we display, the strong town assets, the heritage feel, proximity to Highway One. So that's an easy one. And the two, the team we have in place, excellent organization of financial oversight and management, really effective branding, award-winning, and a really, really great partnership basis with the city and the chamber here in our co-share location, as well as with RMR Parks Canada and a number of other tourism operators. Let's get to the next section, witnesses. So we have limited shoulder season offerings. That being said, we are seeing activity grow in the shoulder seasons. There's more arts and culture activities such as Luna. They're extending the season for Nordic skiing, for downhill skiing, for mountain biking with different trail improvements. And one of the challenges we have is fewer low-budget opportunities for low-income individuals. So there is that sense that this does cater to an elite demographic. That's partly reflected by the issue of short-term vacation rentals, where people are looking for more affordable ways to stay in the community. And further down, affordability and labor, huge problems. As you know, we're having difficulty finding enough workers. For instance, at RMR, the Pipe Coaster is not open two days a week because of lack of staff. Several restaurants have to close a day or two a week because of lack of staff. And that isn't expected to change anytime soon, as we're competing with all of the other resort communities for the same workforce population, and we have high housing costs on top of that to keep them here. So employers are stepping up and realizing that they have to work together to provide better employee housing and other benefits, such as participating in our ambassador program that we fund through the RMI program, which provides frontline staff with training and gives them a free ski pass or a reduction on a ski pass for the year, for instance, as well as other benefits. Okay, we can skip to the next page. So the tourism initiatives committee worked hard to capture how our vision has changed since the last time I did a strategy three years ago. So we have incorporated in this draft document, the OCP vision, the tourism Revelstoke vision, that is now based on more of a holistic destination management approach. And we've come up with, we've come up with an overall vision for tourism. If you go a little further down, that basically, we basically weren't too creative. We pulled the key messages from OCP and from tourism and put them together in our, in our vision statement. There was some interesting conversation around the table as to whether or not the RMI is really about tourism. But again, it is not. It is there to specifically support municipalities whose infrastructure is being burdened, or enhanced, or challenged by, by the increased number of visitors to the community. So this is really intended to support our official community plan and our growth strategy for our city assets. Next page. So the overall goals have stayed somewhat the same. We've tweaked them to align with the new tourism destination management approach. So again, year-round destination, multi-day stay, remarkable visitor experiences. And then further down, you'll see a new one, and that's as new to this year as part of the destination management approach. One more page, Jolene, and it's the holistic destination stewardship. So this is where the MRDT funds, we'll talk about another day, will provide more funding to support destination management. And this is where we've captured the goal in our resort development strategy, that they are shifting from marketing to management, and that they will look at that, an approach of holistic stewardship, working with indigenous partners, tourism stakeholders, and visitors, and to be leaders in sustainable tourism. So given how effective and, and highly motivated our tourism staff are, I have no doubt that this will put us on the map as being a destination where we practice what we preach. So on to two pages after this, page fourteen. A lot of planning going on in the community right now. We've listed all the plans that have informed this resort development strategy. The strategy is not meant to replace any plans, or, you know, oversee any other plans. It's meant to align and support them. So this is not so much a strategy as it is a work plan to allow, to allocate funds to specific things that meet all these different goals. So you can see, it's a pretty good snapshot of what's been going on over the last year across the city, from the OCP to trail strategy to culture, Parks and Recreation Master Planning and Wayfinding. And then we can skip along to page sixteen. I don't know how much time I'm going to spend on each of these project descriptions, but I wanted to maybe open up for questions for each page. So what the committee did was similar to what we did previous go-around. We split the funding into different activities, and we broke out within those project description areas, key priorities for other amenities or services or programming, so that we have some flexibility of moving things around within each category, and again, supporting the city budget to leverage matching funds, to work with city staff, to ensure that they can utilize these funds to be flexible and meet priority projects that are in front of us. So under community connectivity, this is an infrastructure project. So two things jump out. One is our shuttle service ongoing, and one is our trail connectivity throughout the community. And this is again, city assets on city land within the municipal boundaries. So as you recall, we did seek EOF funds from the CSRD to support $100,000 of the ski shuttle over the winter. There is still an opportunity to expand the ski shuttle, and we are looking at a, while it's running now, a summer shuttle, as well as enhancing some offerings in the shoulder season, looking at ways to maybe provide more transportation to the airport. So we have a number of options we can pursue as, as things evolve. And a lot of this will be done in partnership with the Director of Engineering as the transportation master plan comes online. Any questions all about the allocation? We've put the biggest chunk of funding into this category, $900,000, to provide matching funding for the Valley Trail connector trail maintenance, you know, to enhance the existing shuttle service. And you can see the project listings for the different kinds of things we're hoping to do with this funding. But any questions all about this?
Where, Council Elliot?
Ingrid, yeah, the $900,000, is that just accumulated over, over time as to what you have in the pool to allocate, or is that?
It's three years. Yeah, it's three years over the strategy. So the full value of the strategy over three years is, is
$900,000?
Yeah. Yeah, the full value of the whole strategy is over $2 million, but $900,000 has been allocated towards this category.
So, okay, so, so over three years, $300,000 a year is coming out of the RMI, RMI funding that comes in from the tourism tax dollars?
It's actually split up, you know, we'll look at the budget page last, but it's split up. We worked with senior staff to make sure that we allocate it appropriately, so that again, it fits with their work plans and their capital plans. So $100,000 for this year, $300 for next year, and $500 for 2024. And that's just based on Director Black's expectations around the timing of the completion of the Valley Trail, the other matching multiple, multi-use pathways, and some of the other, other infrastructure that will be put in adjacent to the, the new road connecting Nicole to the resort.
Okay, thank you. That's great, Council Charlotte.
Thank you, worship. I'm curious as to one of the conversations. I guess it's more of a summer experience. But getting bicycles around town. So for tourism, I guess the, the drive would be getting bicycles up to the resort, whereas the community, it would be bicycle parking and bicycle commuting, and how that might intersect with bus, like bus and transit systems. Do you see any opportunity for how that inter, like that active transportation mode and intermodal transportation fits in, or is that completely not the tourism? It would be more of the community side?
I would say both. And yeah, Steve is on the call. He could speak to that a bit. But we did, we did look very closely at some of the priorities of the transportation master plan. So when we talk about community connectivity, it's, it's within the community, but it's for moving visitors and staff up to the hill, and also supporting residents within town. So connecting trail systems to other trail systems, so having a connector trail that better links Arrow Heights residents, for instance, with the Green Belt Downtown, or getting staff from downtown up to the hotel and vice versa.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Saying none, carry on, Ms. Brown.
Okay, the next page, page seventeen, is wayfinding. So if you recall, we allocated $550,000 in the last go-round to wayfinding signage, and you see what's around town that's been completed. I think there's a few outstanding pieces, but, but smaller, smaller pieces. Most of the, the work has been done. There's a few additional tourism information kiosks that are planned for the parks, specifically Wooden Head Park and Centennial Park and Kovach, I think, that will provide that visitor information. So plan for phase two is some priorities identified by the Director of Engineering, together with Andrew from Signus Design, who laid out the ten-year strategy. So phase two is going to include additional facility signage, more signage or visitor assets and experiences, the finger signs that point people to different amenities in town. And we haven't detailed this very clearly in here yet. We're just waiting on the feedback from Signus, and actually, that came in just a few days ago. So we'll cross-reference what they're proposing for our phase two, and make sure that this page is updated to reflect those priorities. But this is definitely a key priority of the, of the committee itself. As you know, the wayfinding was an excellent example of collaboration between tourism and the city, with them participating on the, you know, in the process of developing the strategy itself, hiring the contractor, hiring the installation crews, and getting that done. So this has been a really great collaborative project between our tourism and city partner.
Council Charlotte.
Thank you, worship. One experience I had here in Winnipeg on my trip, I took the bus to go to one of the museums. And I'm impressed with how well Google interacts with the different modes of transportation. So having the bus schedule and having the bus routes in the Google mapping. So as you try to navigate your way around the community, it really supports that intermodal transportation. And I'm curious about our wayfinding. I know most of this is for physical signage and sign, and more physical pieces. But I'm just curious as to whether there is any digital components, or if as a community, we have linked in with some of those mapping and navigation systems, the broader ones, so like Google Maps and Apple Maps, and what that looks like to get more interactive with it.
I'm taking notes on your question. I don't have an answer for you right off the top of my head, but when we revisit this plan, I will get some input from engineering, as well as from tourism, as to how they're intending to use electronic wayfinding support. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah. And it seems like, I think in the bigger cities, it's in the best interest to do it on their own. But in a smaller community like ours, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to push them to make sure that any of the Google map or the navigation, those broader navigation systems that our visitors would likely be using, as well as our residents, would link in with this kind of information and the way we would like people to go, rather than the way Google will tell them to go.
Yeah.
For those pathways and for parking. One thing I found really useful was being able to search for a public washroom really hard in a big city. I'm very grateful for our public washrooms, but making that really easy for visitors to be able to find and making sure that that's facilitated.
That's definitely the intent of the wayfinding project. And in terms of how that interacts with electronic information, that's a really good question. I know that at one point, there had been some discussion about some of the signage that can be accessed by pedestrians, having those QR codes that you could link to, to other resources. I'm not sure that that was ever implemented, because it may not be a thing of the future, but with everyone with their own phones. But I will find out that and bring that back. So this is what I'm looking for right now, is input into this. We're back looking at this not too long from now. So I will hurry to, to answer those questions and make sure that we get some, some feedback on those questions.
Thank you.
Ingrid, when we were presented with the signage overall plan, there was some discussion about neighborhoods. And you've mentioned that, that, you know, branding a neighborhood or signage for a particular area instills a sense of pride in that, in that, in that neighborhood. Is that in phase two or three, or what, what, when does that unfold?
I think, Syria worship to Counselor, I think that the neighborhood signage was for phase three or four, but I can find out again. It was not as high a priority because of, it's, it's not a visitor amenity, but we did build that into the strategy overall, because it was seen to, as you say, be a point of, of, you know, kind of producing civic pride and helping people with connecting information between different parts of town and the trail system.
Yeah, and I think in the, in the, in the presentation that came to us, I think there was different colors or different, different ways to identify a particular neighborhood. So if you know you're in Southside or in Arrow Heights, there would be a special color or something unique to that, to that area. I think that was the original plan. And I guess that helps with wayfinding as well. So, that's important.
Syria worship, it was definitely part of the, the overall strategy presented, but it was not identified as a funding priority, given the cost of, of, you know, when you get down to replacing all the smaller signs in the neighborhoods or on the streets, some of that would, would alleviate the cost of the city replacement, but other, other spends would be, would be new spending with RMI funding. And it's not a priority now, but we are going to proceed really carefully with the strategy and phase by phase, kind of unroll it and make sure that there's buy-in from the current council as to what the priorities are for the given year.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. All right, carry on, Ms. Brown.
Next page is water access. If you recall, the last strategy had funds set aside for trying to improve boat launch facilities up at Five Mile, given that Centennial Park boat launch facility was not really a possibility for a number of reasons. We had also looked at Williamson Lake improvements, and so the committee decided to roll those together into water access. So we have some flexibility, with the goal being that we would use this funding to provide a swimming dock at Williamson Lake. We would enhance some of the landscaping and accessible pathways down to the water at Williamson Lake. And with funds that are remaining, we may be able to continue to advocate for B.C. rec sets and trails to develop Five Mile into a viable site for recreators, you know, so with, with facilities like shade, parking, better parking bathrooms, maybe another dock or ways to access the water using small personal watercraft. So that's a long-term strategy, but probably not implementable this year, or this, this go-round. Any questions all about that? We also talked about staging areas in the Illa Silhouette as well for improving access for people that are competing or accessing fast water. So these are all items that are going to have to work with the Parks and Rec Master Plan and connectivity to make sure that we're ready to implement them when we have that connectivity established. Visitor experience arrivals and parks. Again, this is building on the priorities of the former strategy. So we identified Wooden Head Park and Grizzly Plaza as gateways to Revelstoke, and receiving kind of a lot of visitor traffic, and being, being the first impressions, you know, with our visitors for the community. So both locations are overwhelmed at peak times. So we're trying to look at ways that we can ensure that, that there's that quality visitor experience and visitors' needs are met. So one of the things is to complete the washroom at Wooden Head Park. If you recall, we used funds in the last go-round, as well as majority of funding from a COVID grant, COVID infrastructure grant, to build year-round washrooms at Wooden Head Park. The costs have come in significantly higher than anticipated. Partly, that's a result of making it available year-round. So there's, freeze-up doesn't affect it. But that was seen as a key priority for visitors, as you recall, through the pandemic. People arriving in town, restaurants closed, fast food outlets closed, no public washrooms without coming right into town. So this way, that will facilitate year-round access, weekends, evenings, to bathrooms. We, of course, have already developed new bathrooms at our visitor information center, but they're only open during the day. So other, other activities planned in this is, is some of the Grizzly Plaza enhancement that's going on. Oh, there's Steve. Great. Steve, there were some questions for you. I may throw them, lob them back at you, about the trail infrastructure. And visitor arrival and experience. So we're just walking through visitor experience and arrivals in parks. I talked about Wooden Head Park washrooms, perhaps enhancing the sandy dump location to provide a roof so that it's easier to use year-round, in the winter especially. And that will go along with some signage or visitors we're planning to put up. And then maybe Steve can talk to the growth of e-bikes and some additional infrastructure we might be looking at using these funds.
Thank you, Ingrid. And to Mayor and Council, my apologies for being late today. Yeah, so part of the transportation master planning work is consideration of making sure that we can utilize active transportation methods in the winter, which means we need to enhance our snow plowing ability on some of the roads, but we also need to provide that infrastructure for, for people to leave their bikes in the wintertime someplace. And so in many communities, they create winterized bike shelters with plugins for e-bikes in the future. And so as part of the TMP, things that will probably come out of that is, is goals and objectives for us to further enhance bicycle transportation, is the ability to create some bike lockers that are out of the weather, so that we can encourage that mode of transportation. We'll have to find a home for it, but we've got some opportunity there to really create some year-round methods for traveling outside of the vehicle. Thanks.
I don't know if Counsel Elliot or Counselor Charlotte wanted to ask other questions specifically of Steve about connectivity of the trails, or how it interacts with Google Maps and other electronic information? Or did you feel like you got an answer for me that made kind of sense? Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy. Thank you.
Okay, so the next page is new park, new city park features on page twenty. And this is, if you're familiar with Parks and Rec Master Plan, proposed features that would be added to the, the creation of a new park on, off Industrial Powerhouse Road. So some of the priorities of the group and identified in the Parks and Rec Master Plan were things like upgrading the disc golf course, having a dog park, a fenced dog area, having staging areas for access to water, that kind of thing, pump track. So we, we took a really good look at those, those options. And the tourism stakeholders, their input was basically that they wanted to be sure that, that any tourism amenities developed in that area town, you know, had better connectivity through the trail system first, before we invested in those. The one thing they did agree to out of the gate would be to fund the dog park, because most visitors coming to town are coming with their dogs, in their cars. Often, they're using the sandy dump facilities, and that's a, a good use of, of that land out that way to have a fenced dog area. So either, I believe Lori or Steve could speak to that, what that could look like. But that is planned for not this year, but I think the funding is set aside for 2023 for that specific amenity.
The only thing I would add to that, Ingrid, is that this, pushing this, this area as a future park, requires us to find a way to get an off, off-road trail from Four Street Bridge, basically, to Powerhouse. And so we do need to figure out how to push forward with continuous path that doesn't require children and people to move on to the public streets versus staying on the dike.
Any questions about that area of the plan?
Sorry, Ingrid, just maybe pertains to the previous issue. The bathrooms facility, the one downtown, is it open year-round? I'm not sure it is, but go ahead. No. So I know we're doing another facility at Wooden Head, but I, I think that's a missing element for people who know about in the downtown plaza.
Well, it'll be something for us to look, definitely look at in the future. Winterizing is a big thing. So it'll be, you know, how do we winterize? Can we winterize the existing facility? Or do we have to rebuild? And now it will have to be something that's coordinated, not only with planning, but also with our finance department, make sure that there's money. And, and we may need to talk to RMI about that sort of thing.
Is that, is that something, I mean, they're planning a new facility. Why not make the one that they have adequate? I mean, I just wondered. How many of the doors are locked? So I, I just think it's a missing.
Any comment, Mr. Black, regarding Washington downtown?
I, I would, I would believe that that would be a very valued amenity for the community and for our guests. And so certainly something that we should consider in our short-term or long-term planning to ensure that those facilities get constructed when we have the finances available. But it is a missing amenity. when we have the finances available, but it is a missing amenity definitely for this part of town.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nata.
I would just like to confirm that the washing facility is open in the wintertime.
Okay, thank you for that. My apologies.
Is that because is that was it's was it's? I I've gone by there several times and it seems locked to me when I do show up. I don't know whether it's right or what 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 the issue is.
Is there a limited hours, Ms. Nata, or is it 24/7?
So I believe that it's closed later on in the evening, but I'm also aware that if if the freezing level reaches a certain temperature, they will close the washing facility to avoid freezing of the pipes. And I'm not sure what that temperature trigger is. It might be minus 12, minus 15. But as far as I knew, that's when the facility would be closed.
Thank you for that. Any further comments? Any other comments, counselors? Okay, saying none. I'll just before we go on, when we were talking about washrooms at Wooden Head, do we have a timeline on completion at this point?
So your worship, I would expect that project to be complete by fall. It should be available to the community after Labor Day.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, Ms. Brown, let's carry on.
So we're mostly complete, have completed talking about the city-owned amenities and and services, but we'll go on with the funds that are allocated to third parties or outside the city to, again, support destination management. So the next page is Recreation Trails and Amenities on page 21. And this is essentially funds that we have granted in the past to groups like the Nordic Center, the Alpine Club of Canada, the Revelstoke Cycling Association. And we have been able to shift some of those costs over to EOF funding. If you recall, last year, we directed 30,000 for the Alpine Club, 30,000 for the RCA and 30,000 for or 20,000 for Nordic for a purchase of equipment that didn't really fit within the parameters of this program. So we're trying to find ways to to do more with less or to spread, spread it around according to the program criteria. So we have 100,000 for over the three years in this category. It's not a lot. We have spent more in the past, but again, we have been able to access EOF funds for some of those ongoing maintenance costs that the groups need because they may not necessarily need to invest in new trails or new amenities, but they need to maintain the ones they've already already built. And there's some limitations around the funding for that. So again, this will be an application process. We'll come back to council with a number of of requests for funds with recommendations from the Tourism Initiatives Committee as to whether to approve them and what amount. So that'll happen as as did previously with, you know, based on an application intake. Next page, page 22 is Arts and Culture Event Infrastructure and Beautification. Similar to Recreation Trails and Amenities, this is for third parties to apply for funding, whether it is through a museum or the Visual Arts Center or the Railway Museum. This is where they can look to funds to support, you know, making sure that they have the integrity of their of their heritage building or their collections intact to enhance that arrival experience to again, enhance the visitor experience in the downtown core. So examples in the past have been a new roof for the Visual Arts Gallery, new installations at the museum and archives and installations at the Railway Museum. And if you've been to any of those facilities lately, they've they've made a substantial difference, I would say, to visitor experience there. So again, like Recreation Trails and Amenities, this is an application process. Groups will apply. The committee will meet, assess the applications, and make recommendations to council for approval. Next category is festivals, events, and animation. So we have seen this level drop a fair bit, and I wanted to explain why. In the past, we spent substantially more on festivals and events. However, with our increased funding of the ski shuttle and and the eligibility of MRDT funds to contribute to that, we've leaned more on tourism to pay for a larger share of events, which they have stepped up to do so that we have less requirement to invest matching funds in events. Tourism will carry the bulk of the events. We're carrying the bulk of the shuttle costs. And we also recognize that that at least going into this next year, our organizations are in a good position with funding set aside that had been held since the pandemic, kind of put a stop to most events. So there is some efficiencies related to that. Any questions all about these these activities?
Any questions, counselors? Saying none, carry on.
And the last category is services. So this includes two key services that were found to be really valuable to to attracting and retaining visitors. One is the Ambassador Program that was delivered by the Chamber of Commerce over the past two years, $30,000 a year. We've reduced it to 50 or sorry, $20,000 a year for each of three years. And that will ensure that, again, frontline workers get consistent training across all frontline sectors. That could include Parks and Rec staff. It certainly includes the resort staff and any staff working in retail, hospitality, restaurants, that kind of thing that have kind of that frontline access to visitors. We treated it over the past few years as more of a of a workforce retention tool. So we built up the the benefits that are offered to people who take the course and, you know, the help to employers to recruit and retain workers. So it shifted a bit from simply ensuring this valuable knowledge is shared consistently to really trying to find a way to entice workers to come and stay and work here. So it serves both purposes and that that will shift and be flexible as we go forward. A small amount of funding in this category is towards the, we'd like to put towards the Revelstoke Summer Shuttle, which is a first time. The shuttle is up and running now, transporting visitors to the hill. The RMR has agreed to take the risk of running that shuttle going forward, knowing that there may not be a contribution coming from the city, but we are recommending to be put $25,000 toward it this year to ensure its viability. And then in future, again, and Steve can speak to this, with the hopeful amalgamation of the ski shuttle and BC Transit services, there may be efficiencies down the road. And again, we have some EOF funds dedicated to this service that we can lean on as well.
Any comments from council? So, you know, I I'm really supportive of that ambassador program, Ms. Brown. And I think when staff, especially frontline staff, have that, if they're in the in the hospitality industry, they will learn how to give service that will benefit to them from a financial perspective as they go ahead. So I'm I'm excited about some more funds being there with that. And so, Mr. Black, just going to, we were talking earlier, I think Counselor Charlotte was asking about the transportation of bicycles. Somewhere along the line, I feel like I've seen a document regarding being able to utilize transit or our own shuttle system for utilization or or those who are on bicycles to get them to the hill, that sort of thing. Is that indeed fact or was I dreaming?
Your worship, that is definitely a goal to ensure that anybody that needs to use a transit system has those capabilities, and that includes adding bike racks to our existing buses and definitely with our future fleet after combination of the the shuttle service and BC Transit. Actually, the operator of our local service is actually looking for bike racks right now to put onto his buses for this year.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
You're welcome, sir.
Counsel Elliot.
Couple things. Steve, on the bike access with with the buses, I know in a lot of cases, sometimes a neighborhood could bike to a central location and would fit in collaboration with the transit system. So part of the covered shelter strategy, putting them downtown might be at these hub or at these these remote locations, a centralized point where you can lock up your bike, store, jump on the bus and get downtown or move to another part of the community. That's sort of more comprehensive. I guess that's part of our master plan or maybe to be included.
Counsel Elliot, you are right on with that that description of where we're going. And yes, it's very important that we basically are creating park and rides for not cars, but for bicycles. And so if we can create those nodes and allow people to park their bikes safely out of the weather, I'm sure that they're going to be there when they get back. Yeah, put some plugins for chargers and they can pop on the bus and get to where they need to go. Absolutely.
Great. And then one more, the the street festival, that's the music at the plaza. When does that start?
And again, is that not correct, Ms. Nata? Any comment on Street Fest Fisher?
Thank you, your worship. I believe it is programmed to start July 1st.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
They'll be incorporating some entertainment into the Canada Day festivities. And then July 2nd will be the official street festival.
Awesome. Great. Thank you for that.
Is that something we should broadcast?
Chris Nata is already, your department's already dealing with that.
After your worship, the advertising for that event is done through the Revelstoke Arts Council.
Okay. Great. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Ms. Brown, anything else?
Through your worship, to your worship, no, I'm not specifically about the contents of the draft strategy. If you look at my discussion paper, I've highlighted some of the the bigger issues, kind of the implications, you know, strategic, financial, administrative implications of the resort development program and what that means for the city and our department. So if there's questions about any of that, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll be back with requiring your vote, a resolution of approval for the draft strategy to be submitted to the ministry and out for engagement. It is already now posted on Talk Revelstoke, but we're trying to basically consolidate a number of processes and get this get this in in time.
Yeah, appreciate that. Counsel Elliot.
Yeah, you mentioned that there's additional administrative support through the city that would be needed. Do you know how much that would cost?
Yes, there is. This year, one of the changes made to the program criteria that was recommended by all of those of us administering the program in the resort communities was to up the amount for administrative support. So it's gone from 10 to $20,000 a year.
But from the city's perspective, isn't that what you're mentioning here, additional support beyond that allocation?
It is a big program to administer. You know, I think that's been an ongoing conversation is that why is there not funding for an entire position, for instance, you know, in this program. But I think the the response of the ministry would be that this is a program to leverage provincial funding for tourism amenities. And so anything a city is doing with its own infrastructure, whether it's trails or washrooms or downtown beautification, this gives us a chance to up the ante and basically contribute more to leverage more funding through this program. But there's not, it's not intended to support key city staff. Having said that, $20,000, you know, per annum does cover some of the travel to the annual conference, performance evaluation measures and some of the project coordination that we can we can lean on on finance or or administration for. So we're hoping to kind of discuss that in context of admin support for our department.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for the report, Ms. Brown.
Is that what you want?
Go forward. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's it. It's a discussion paper and then it'll come forward for a motion, which will be basically, yeah, if there's no other questions that you need answers to. Have we answered your question sufficiently today?
I believe so.
Great, thank.
Saying no further questions, we're going to move on. I have nothing on departmental updates, correspondence, or communication. So I'm going to ask for a motion to go in camera pursuant to section 90.18 ENK to community. Counsel Ryan, seconded by Counsel Elliot, all in favor. Motion's carried. We're going to move in camera. And let me find my in-camera agenda here.